Call this November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Lockwood, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this evening to serve our community. Everything we say, everything we do, be consistent with your will. Ask this in the name of your Son and Jesus Christ.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Watkins, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We have a special presentation that we are starting tonight's meeting with, and that's the New Kent University Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-three Recognition. And if you got a four-point-oh average, you've got a happy smiley face behind your name. So I ask the board members to, we'll stand down front and call you up and...
Give you your certificate.
I should let you do it, Mr. Tiller. It's a little tight.
Tia Sandman? Ray? Stefanoski? You know, one is not here. So I'm gonna assume Stephanie's not here. Walker? Terrence? Karen? David? Laura?
What?
Later? Stephanie Kinney?
She's not here. Just thought I'd do a joke tomorrow.
Jim Burkes? Usually like Rodney do all this, but, um... Kim Dixon? Suzanne Cassell? We do have, I hate to run out on y'all right away, but we do have a short closed-session item that we need to discuss. And I believe Mr. Evelyn has a motion.
Yes, before we go into closed session, I would like to congratulate all the graduates and thank you all for taking the time out. I guess of your busy schedule, I don't know how many of y'all are retired now, but it is a commitment for ten weeks to come here. And I want to thank our staff that put this on. I mean, they worked very hard. And I think you realize that we are very proud of our staff here at New Kent County. And thank you again for taking time and the commitment to learn a little bit more about how your county works.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Evelyn.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one for discussion of the performance and discipline of specific public officers.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open session requirements of the Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to go in closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. We'll go back up the agenda one spot. I left off the consent agenda. Does anybody have any concerns about the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as read and be a part of our recorded documents.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next on our agenda is the citizens' comment period. First and only on the list is Laura Echimovic. May I remind you to state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak?
Is it on already? Yes. Laura Echimovic, 6000 Spring Run Drive, Quentin, Virginia. While normally I speak to you in official capacity, today I'm speaking to you as a citizen and a mom. And please forgive me, because it's going to be hard for me. In two days, my family will have an anniversary of probably the worst day of our life. It was the day that our daughter was killed in a car accident, and every day is losing a child leaves you with such a deep sorrow that it soaks to your bones. Their absence and silence is in the room. It's raw and unyielding form of grief. And you probably wonder why I'm here today to talk to you about that. What you may not know is that my daughter was killed in a school zone by a driver going 45 miles an hour. The first sentence the doctor wrote that it was an unfortunate 16-year-old who arrived in his ER that day. So the topic I would like to bring up to you today, and I hope I have your commitment every day when I leave this courthouse, the school zone is not properly marked. And in 16 years, we've grown so much, just like the school zone my daughter was killed in and not properly marked. The sheriff sent out, this reminder came out, and the sheriff is 100% behind me, but he sent out an overall saying we're going to enforce the speed limit. I said, "That's great, Joe. I'll be glad to go to court when you give me a ticket, because when you leave this courthouse, you can't tell that the school zone is in effect." Only if you leave courthouse circle going east can you see that the school zone is in effect. Hundreds of people are at this courthouse every day. You come out of the other end of courthouse circle, which is 90% of the traffic, you can't do it. Can't see it. Another thing that the sheriff brought to my attention, which I hadn't even thought about, New Chipping Lane, where all our students are driving, you can also not see. These are inexperienced drivers. I think a lot of people think, okay, speed kills, and you have to be going this significant speed, 45 miles an hour, gentlemen. And I lost my daughter. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, Ms. Page. We have the opportunity to do something. I have no idea what the cost is, but I can tell you that one child is worth any cost to make sure there are flashing lights that are properly marked through our school zone. Thank you.
That's going to be tough to follow. Next on our agenda is the residency administrators' report. Good luck, Marshall.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. This past month, we had 56 work orders completed, 53, had two callouts after hours. Been doing regular pothole repairs, shoulder repairs, pipe installs and pipe cleaning throughout the county, ditching, tree and brush removal and cleanup, sign repair and cleaning, and litter pickup. We're currently working on a last cycle of primary mode, and we're working as hard as we can to get it completed by Thanksgiving. So I think they're on 273 right now, working, and then they'll go to 249 and wrap up with 106 and 155. So other than that, I was at the ground breaking Monday for the 64 widening. I saw Mr. Hathaway and Ms. Page there. It was a good, well-attended function. So other than that, I don't have anything else. Not unless you have any questions.
Mr. Stevens?
No, Ms. Wynn, thanks for being here. And I know it's kind of unusual, but I have no concerns. Thank you.
Make that part of the record, Ms. Watkins. Mr. Evelyn?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
Mr. Lockwood?
Just thank you for Jeff and crew for getting out and getting those patches done that we talked about last time, and I saw the tractor heading down Tabernacle this afternoon. So I appreciate you getting back out there and finishing that overhead work. Thank you.
Should be done by tomorrow, supposedly.
Ms. Page?
I don't just say half the things different to you and all the VDOT workers.
I do want to bring up one thing that you mentioned last meeting, Ms. Page, about the arbors. There's three sections in the arbors. The first section is close to being brought into the system, and sections two and three, we've got a little ways to go yet. So just want to let you know that. Are they? We're not going to do them. No. We can't do them, so.
Well, I don't have anything either this month, Mr. Wynn, and thank you all for what you do. And again, happy holidays.
Y'all have a happy Thanksgiving as well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll start with a presentation, the New Kent County Draft Legislative Agenda. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The document you have before you is our draft legislative agenda for the upcoming 2024 legislative session. As has been our policy in the past, we have selected key items, action items, that we'd like to present to our state representatives. And we also, in this document, present our position on various potential legislative items that may be considered by the Assembly. Part one are the action items in the document, and these are for, I'm presenting today for discussion and consideration. This is not a final document. If there's anything you'd like added to this document, please let me know, or anything you'd like removed, please let me know as well. But I've kind of picked the, I've picked the top five items that I've been dealing with over the past several months. First item is an additional judgeship for the Ninth Judicial Circuit of Virginia. This is something I've worked with Judge Bondurant on, and the other circuit judges in the region. They have requested an additional judge due to the increased caseloads that they've been experiencing. That request, and I've prepared a letter of support to the State Judicial Council of Virginia, that request has been approved, but it has to go before the General Assembly to make it final. So we're asking for the General Assembly's support to approve an additional judgeship for our circuit, the Ninth Circuit. Item number two is an item that you know that is near and dear to us, that we have spent a considerable amount of time on, and we're requesting funding for alternatives to groundwater. As you are aware, the state is really clamping down on groundwater withdrawal permits without leaving us resources to find alternative options. So we're asking for alternative options. We're asking for resources to fund alternative options, and we are looking at options such as purchasing water from neighboring counties and withdrawing water from the Pumonkie River. The fourth item is the Dieosken State Park. I'm excited to announce next month, I have a meeting set up with the Virginia Park System, where they want to come down and tour the McKinney Woods property that we've recently purchased, a 273-acre site in the eastern portion of the county. I believe it would be a perfect site for a state park, but I know it's going to take more than just the Virginia State Park System agreeing to that. It's going to take some funding and probably some action with the Assembly as well. So we're asking for support on that to make that a state park.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt, please?
Sure.
Ms. Hathaway, I know there'd been some discussion on converting that to a state park, where we give the state all that property that we just paid $1 million for, to get them to come in and develop a park. And I, and this is just my opinion, but before we go, because that would be a major change to that part of the county, with narrow, winding country roads, and just like we did with the Drug Rehab Center, just like we did with the Combat Training Facility, I think what I would suggest doing is to have some kind of public hearing, to hear from the residents there to see if they want that in their neighborhood. That's just my opinion. I may be voted down completely, but I just think for us, I don't want them to wake up one morning, there's a state park and bulldozers in there and doing all that stuff, and they're going, "We had no voice in this."
Yeah. I totally agree with that. I would love to have community involvement, and not just whether or not they want a park there, but I'd like for the community to participate in the design, if we move forward with the park, and get input from them of what facilities they would like to see in that park, if that's something that they want.
Right.
So yes, I imagine that there'll be numerous opportunities for community participation.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, it's my understanding, this isn't going to be like it's a done deal or anything. This is just putting it out there.
At this point, the state has not seen the property. They've not been on the property. So they want to tour it to see if it has the potential to be a state park. There's a lot of steps that would be involved to making that happen, and we're just at the beginning.
And if I may interject, we've already had those conversations about community meetings and input as far as when that would occur. We're like in the discussion stages with the state. We're not at any kind of planning point or anything like that. So I would say those conversations have already been had with the administration.
And item five, crisis services and state hospital capacity to accept individuals subject to temporary detention orders. There is a health crisis amongst the state of Virginia with TDOs, and unfortunately, it ties up a lot of our local resources by having officers sit with people that are just waiting for beds. And the bad thing about it is, when they're just waiting for beds, they're not getting the services that they truly need. They're just waiting. So we're asking that the state really put some resources towards addressing this need. I mean, I know, I haven't talked to the sheriff recently about this, but I know that there have been situations where we have just had to sit with people for three days, and then we find a bed on the other side of the state and have to transfer all the way on the other side of the state because there are no beds in our area available. So we're asking for some support with additional resources there. And then our position statements. There is a lot of talk in the General Assembly about things that may come up, potential legislation. There are some lobbying groups, such as the Home Builders Association, that's fighting hard to take away local zoning ability. And we've heard some of that when we looked at our cluster subdivision. our cluster subdivision ordinance. So we're asking the state to not mess with our authority to regulate local land use decisions. And I apologize for the numbering mistake. For some reason, one item got deleted from here. But item 2.2 actually is unfunded mandates. And I will add that back. I'm not sure what happened and how that got defeated, deleted. But definitely, we are opposed to legislation that will create unfunded mandates.
Mr. Hathaway, when you say unfunded mandates, because up above on your action items, number three was skipped, but that pertains to unfunded mandates for salaries and positions.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's different, but it's another unfunded mandate. Thank you. Item three in the first section, funding for state mandated positions. We request that the state meet its obligation to fund appropriate staffing and competitive salaries for the state system of justice, to include clerks, magistrates, Commonwealth attorney, and district court employees. I believe we've heard from all of these positions requesting supplemental funding from the county, and that's purely because the state is not meeting its requirements. Moving down to item three on position, this is one that's been here on our legislative agenda before, but it's asking the state to give us other options for publicizing notices. You know, right now, the state requires that we run ads in the newspaper. The newspaper is great, but it doesn't take into account the other forms of media that's out there, and some of which is becoming more and more popular. So it would be great to have more flexibility there. Item four, I believe we all know that there is a statewide crisis with public safety officials, finding qualified public safety officials. We're all competing with each other as far as localities, and there's a shortage in the workforce. So item four is a request for legislation. We would support legislation that would provide resources that would assist local governments with the recruitment, retention, training, and support of first responders, such as law enforcement, fire and EMS personnel, and 911 dispatchers. Item number five, New Kent supports dedicated state and federal funding for local governments to acquire and maintain advanced cybersecurity to protect vital systems and sensitive data. We anticipate that this is going to be a discussion in the upcoming general session regarding more regulations relating to cybersecurity. And we just hope that there's some resources that are attached to those new regulations. And item six is an item that I'm sure we can all identify with, but we're asking, well, we're supporting the expansion of authority and discretion for VDOT resident administrators to approve modifications to design standards where appropriate with local needs, including the reduction of speed limits. You know, right now, the process is when we submit and request that speed studies be performed, the decision is not being made at the local residency level, it's being made at the Richmond District level. And I feel that those decisions should be made closer to the people that's really more involved in our district. So therefore, the administrator, the resident administrator, should be given more authority and flexibility to make those speed limit decisions and traffic decisions. So those are the items that I am proposing. Again, I'd be happy if you want to meet and discuss it further. And if you have any changes you'd like to make, please, please don't attack me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Anybody have any questions from Mr. Hathaway on this?
Just one statement, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
2.6 with the VDOT resident administrator, I think it should be the county administrator making those decisions.
I don't disagree.
But that's just me. I've only been asking that for the last four years. So, thank you.
Anybody else before we move on to the public hearings? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. First public hearing tonight is ordinance... All right. Let's move on to elected officials' reports. Anybody? Or Steers?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to tell everybody that we've been through a terrible election season, which is not pleasant for a lot of our citizens. But that's behind us. Let's all pull together, come together as a great community, and go forward. The Thanksgiving feast will be at the Promise Forge Rec Center on Thanksgiving Day. We serve over a thousand meals, just for the whole community. Everybody in the community is welcome to come. Also, on Sunday, December the 10th, is the Promise Forge Christmas Parade. So if you'd like to enter a float or anything like that, you can go online, the Promise Forge Christmas Parade, sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steers. Ms. Evelyn?
I'd just like to thank everybody that came out and supported the New Kent Education Foundation Bowl-a-thon on the 2nd of November. It was a great success. They raised a bunch of money for teachers and students, for grants, and all kinds of other stuff that the kids and teachers can use. So thanks for everybody for coming out of that, and hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Mr. Lockwood?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I really would like...
Sure.
Taking after you. I just want to thank you, Laura, for your comments this evening. I can't imagine what you've been through. And I won't be on this board to move that ball forward, but I have every confidence that the members that will be here and remaining here will be working diligently to get that accomplished. So that would be my hope. So thank you.
Ms. Page?
I don't have anything.
Again, for some of fellow board members, I hope everybody does have a happy Thanksgiving. It's the beginning of the holiday season, and hopefully we can move forward and have a lot to be thankful for. Staff reports. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just... Thank you. Sorry about that. Just like to remind the public that November 26 is our Grand Illumination Event. That is the Sunday after Thanksgiving from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the Courthouse Complex. We're excited this year. This is our 10th year of having the Grand Illumination. And we were out all day today. Our contractor was out all day today installing lights. It's starting to look a lot like Christmas outside. So if you're available, we hope that you can join us for our annual Grand Illumination Event. Thank you.
And if you were in Lowe's in September, it looked a whole lot like Christmas there then, too. Other business? Anybody? Mr. Hathaway? Appointments. Anybody have an appointment delegated by district?
Where is it? Okay. I moved to appoint Samuel Javison as District Three Representative to the Economic Development Authority to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2027.
All right. Anybody else have any appointments by district?
I do, sir.
Okay.
I moved to appoint Sharon Oakley. Sharon J. Oakley is District Five Representative to the Board of Road Viewers to serve a four-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2027.
Is that all?
That's all.
All right.
And my other one is I moved to appoint Chris Gable as District Three Representative to the Purchasing of the Development Rights Committee, to serve a three-year term, beginning July 1st, 2023, ending June 30th, 2026.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. If no others, appointments. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next appointments not delegated by district. Anybody have any? Ms. Page, did you have one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there is one that I'd like to make.
Okay.
I moved to appoint Assistant Financial Services Director Andrea Gardner as a representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to complete a two-year term, ending June 30th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. If no other appointments, not delegated by district. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Appointments, regional boards and commissions? Anybody? All righty, moving along.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there is one on the record. I moved to appoint Lisa Diggs as New Kent's Representative to the Henrico Area Mental Health and Development Services Board, to serve a three-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Any other? Okay.
Missed that one. Mr. Chairman, I moved to appoint Ryan Shobe, or Shoby, I'm not sure which, as New Kent's appointee to the Tri-River Alcohol Safety Action Program, to serve a three-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Is that all now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If none others, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Well, we still have a couple of minutes, so we can take a three-minute break and then have our public hearings.
And get some more.
Can't wait to get home and heat up a slice of that a little bit.
Yep. Yep. I go anyway, because I know they don't want me to come.
Tonight, we have three public hearings. First public hearing is ordinance O-1623, approval of the issuance of revenue bonds by the Farms of New Kent Community. Brendan Staley from Preston Hollow.
My name is Brendan Staley. I'm with Hunt and Andrews Kirk. We serve as bond counsel to the Community Development Authority, but also been asked to serve in that role by Preston Hollow that are here to present the proposed public hearing item for your consideration this evening. So about two years ago, you may recall that you all approved an issuance of bonds to refund bonds issued by the CDA back in 2006. There were two series of bonds issued at that time. One was secured by special assessments on certain property in the district. The other was secured by a mixed pledge of assessments on other property in the district, as well as certain excess revenues from the sale of lots, development parcels, by the special purpose entity that Preston Hollow routed the trustee set up to dispose of property in the district that the trustee took over. So what's before you tonight is a new transaction that in part is a restructuring of some of the bonds that were issued in 2021. And then that restructuring is being undertaken to enable the issuance of additional bonds that would fund further public improvements to support continued build-out of the development. And so the hope is to fund those public improvements on an accelerated basis to continue to push the pace of development. Why the restructuring is necessary to achieve that is because in 2021, there was, one, an agreement that no bonds would be issued other than refunding bonds. And so we need to amend documents to provide for new money bonds. The other portion is that in order to issue the new money bonds, Preston Hollow has concluded that the best way to structure those bonds is to split the security that was previously dedicated to a single series of bonds, the 2021B bonds. So those bonds were secured by the mix of special assessments and excess land sale revenues. What they were proposing to do tonight is to then issue three series of bonds through the CDA in 2023. Two of those would be refunding bonds. The first would be secured by the assessments. No increase in assessments, no change in the assessments, no reallocation among the parcels, just taking those assessments that currently secure the 21B bonds, and then assigning them to a new refunding bond. Second series of refunding bonds would be secured by excess land sale revenues. So those would be same set of revenues that are currently pledged to the 2021B bonds. The third series of bonds would be a drawdown loan that would also be secured by repayment or repayment from excess land sale revenues. So at a high level, that's the objective, is to create this new category of bonds that are available to fund additional public infrastructure. What you may recall from 2021 as well, or perhaps 2006, is that all CDA bond issuances are conditioned on the approval by ordinance of the county board supervisors. So the CDA cannot act, or cannot issue bonds, rather, without your approval. And so the CDA has been apprised of this. They've heard what the proposed transaction is, but they deferred their action until the board had an opportunity to convene and consider the proposal so that they weren't getting ahead of you all. And so the CDA has it on its agenda to meet next week, pending the outcome of this meeting. The idea is that after you all approve it, the CDA will meet to take action on the item. So with that, I've tried to keep it fairly succinct. I realize that the document you have in front of you this evening, which is the ordinance that would approve this transaction, covers a lot of ground, and I can go into more detail if it's helpful, but I don't want to get into minutia if it's not going to be constructive for you all. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. There are also representatives of Preston Hollow who have dialed in, to the extent that you all have questions that I'm not able to answer, or that go more into the development activity there. I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to you all, unless there's something further I can do.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Staley at this time? Ms. Page? Okay. Mr. Lockwood? All right. All right, well, if we have anything, we'll open the public hearing, have the public hearing, and then we'll come back with you after that, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. This time, I'll open the public hearing, ordinance O-1623, for the approval of issuance of revenue bonds by the Farms of New Kent. Well, no one signed up, so at this time, I will close the public hearing, ordinance O-1623. Now, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Thaupin?
Yes, I have one. For counsel, bond counsel.
Yes, sir.
So in this ordinance here, it says, "The 2023B1 bonds will be secured by a pledge of the remaining 2021B assessments. And the 2023B2 bonds and the 2023B3 bonds will be secured by pledge of excess KFHC revenues." What are those excess revenues?
Fair enough. So those are the excess land sale revenues that I described. So KFHC, or Kent Farms Holding Company LLC, is the entity that the trustee created in the mid-2010s to take possession of the land from the prior developer. And so that trustee-controlled entity has been operating as the developer, building out that project so that there's a source of revenue to repay the bonds. And so in 2021, what was done was they said, "Well, we can take those land sale revenues and pledge them to new bonds as part of the refunding." And so they were termed excess KFHC revenues. There's a process set out in a payment agreement that was executed in 2021 between the CDA and the special purpose entity, Kent Farms Holding Company. And that sets forth how all the revenues derived from land sales are applied. First, they're applied to pay special assessments on any of the property that the SPE owns. Then they filter through to pay operating and development costs, so like the build-out of the project. And I'm going to miss a bucket here probably, but then after that, at the very bottom, is this catch-all, which constitutes excess. And that's what's been pledged to the bondholders in 2021, and that's what would be pledged to the new bondholders that would be substituted for the 2021B holders.
What happens if there's no excess?
So they would just continue to wait to be paid. The bonds are capital appreciation bonds. And so capital appreciation bonds, there's no interest payable in real time at all accretes, and it's only payable at maturity of the bonds. And so there's no interest in principal due until final maturity. And so I can't speak to the math. I would defer to Preston Hollow and Davenport on what the math shows, to the extent there is. But in terms of how it works, there's no principal and interest payable until final maturity. However, to the extent there are excess revenues coming in in real time, there's what's called a turbo redemption feature. And so bonds are being redeemed on a quarterly basis, or should be redeemed on a quarterly basis to the extent that there are excess land sale revenues coming in.
I'm not saying I'm against what you're trying to do, but I fully don't understand. And obviously, in my opinion, you haven't fully underst... You know, you haven't fully stated what the excess funds were. And if we approve this ordinance tonight, the prior ordinance of 2005 ordinance and the 2020 ordinance, the way this reads, ordinance are not in conflict, and they are hereby ratified and confirmed. So, I mean, you're done with everything else. So for me to feel comfortable with it, I need, I mean, I need some numbers from Davenport. I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I need to be able to understand this a little bit more to make sure the county's protected.
I certainly understand your point of view on that. Very sympathetic. But can I at least, I do have a copy of the payment agreement. I'm happy to walk through that with you, if that's helpful at all as part of this discussion. But if it's not a question about the mechanics, but rather the numbers, I can't answer that for you.
That's right. Numbers are pretty important.
Understood.
If I may kind of piggyback on that, it's also kind of, you know, you said that the 2023B3 bonds were not to exceed $45 million, and it would be something of a drawdown loan to carry on development. Who approves those draws? Who, I mean, there's a lot of question about, you know, how that money is drawn down and what it's used for specifically, because it was presented to us that this $45 million would be to develop the business side of what's going on there, not the residential side. Is that correct?
I would defer to Preston Hollow to tell you exactly what the proposed suite of improvements are in terms of where they're located. I don't know the breakdown between residential and other aspects of the development.
When they presented to us last time, their focus for that 2023B... Yeah, B3 bond, was that it was necessary in order to continue the business development in that area, and that if we didn't get, if they didn't have access to that capital, it would slow things down for that aspect of the development. And without seeing how that money is approved for the drawdowns and all that, I'd like to have a better understanding of that so that we know that the money is going to be utilized for exactly what it was designed to be used for, and not some other thing that we may have to fix later. So I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Evelyn that I would like to have Davenport, you know, maybe give us a little better understanding and a little more clarification of how those funds would be utilized and who's going to be in charge of approving those draws.
And I can walk you through the approval process, if that's helpful now. But I can also do it at a later time, if you prefer to talk through it with Davenport first. You tell me what's helpful for you.
I'd like to have a... I think I would like to see Davenport, you know, come in and give us an independent review of what we're looking at. I think that would be in our best interest to make sure that we're protecting the best interests of the development. And I know it must be frustrating for you because the CDA is waiting for us to do something, and it would be nice to have a little bit of input from them as well, you know, to see where they kind of stand on this. So, I mean, it's just, we're kind of like all at the starting line, waiting for somebody to pull the gun and shoot it. So I would like to have a better independent explanation of especially the 2023B3 bonds.
And so just to be clear, what you're looking for is primarily an explanation of the contemplated improvements in which parts of the development they'll be undertaking in, and how they'll benefit the business component of the development?
Yes, that would be my biggest concern that I've seen, is I'd like to know exactly where the money's going to be utilized and for what term, and who approves the drawdowns and so forth.
Understood.
Ms. Page? Do you have any questions? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Steers.
Yep, Mr. Staley, I also wanted to reemphasize that the county will bear no liability for the cost of these bond issuance, right?
That's correct. The special assessment bonds and the excess Kent Farms Holding revenue bonds are not an obligation of the county. The county has no obligation to pay the debt service on those bonds. They are limited obligations of the CDA, payable solely from the revenues and other security described in the resolution, or the ordinance, rather. And so only from special assessments, which have already been imposed, not in an amount greater than what's already been imposed. And then the excess land sale revenues or the excess KFHC revenues, which are purely generated by sale of development parcels owned by Kent Farms Holding Company, and being taken down by home builders and other entities through this process. But no county obligation with respect to the bond.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Evelyn, Mr. Lockwood. The $45 million, suppose it ends up costing $60 million. Where was that additional $15 million going to come from to get started on this commercial side? And I'm going to go back to 2005 or '06, when the Farms of New Kent was originally set up. They had goals that they were supposed to reach based on the number of homes that were built and sold. And they had landmarks that they had to do as far as amenities and commercial space that they were supposed to build when we reached, when they reached a threshold. What happened to that? I mean, so now, here we are trying to, we're dancing around these bond issues yet again, two years later. I'm just afraid that in 13 years, there's not going to be money there if they keep going back and borrowing against these bonds. I don't care what number you give them. I'm just, that's what I'm afraid of. So I'm in agreement with Mr. Lockwood. Before we make a decision tonight, I would like to hear from Davenport as well to get some of these numbers for our benefit. So, I mean...
I want to make sure I understand your question correctly, too, so that when I go back and discuss it with Preston Hollow and Davenport, and I'm on the same page. Your concern is how the scope of public improvements that are intended to be developed to support the additional development activity at the district, how those will be funded to the extent that they, those costs exceed the amount of the drawdown loan? Okay.
Yes. Except, I know they keeps talking about a $45 million... $45 million drawdown amount. But if that number goes to 60, are they going to come back and ask us to do something else with the bonds to refinance yet again? That's the part. Again, like I said, the original agreement was they were going to start commercial space when they built so many homes. And they were going to have a pool, walking trails, clubhouses built in all of these different neighborhoods at a certain point, and then the commercial space was going to start. And I don't know that all the amenities have been fulfilled yet or not. So that's my biggest concern. So we've had the public hearing, but I think...
I would just like to ask Mr. Hathaway, when we've got our work session on the 28th, would we be able to get Davenport into maybe cover some then? And we still have another December regular meeting on the 11th of December. So, I mean, I would think that we'd be able to, if we can line up the stars, you know, kind of, if we can get them in here for our work session, and then maybe defer this until the December 11th meeting.
Yes, sir. I just looked at Mitch Bruguleo, who's with Davenport and sitting in the audience, and I believe he should have said yes to December...
Read him out.
Okay.
All right, so I think kind of the consensus here, and that will, if there is no other questions, we'll close this public hearing, but we will defer on voting until we hear back from Davenport.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Thaupin.
I have one more question. Just for the record, this new debt is going to be at interest rate of 7% compared to the 5% that they have right now.
I think it's, I think it's up to 7.85. Is that what you say, 7.5? But I think Ramiro confirmed the other day on the phone and a call with the county administrator, as well as others, that they would fix the rate at what was shown in the presentation they gave a few weeks ago. I don't recall what that rate was off the top of my head. It was under 7.875. Dan's thinking it was seven and a half. I just don't remember whether it was seven or seven and a half.
And that $45 million is going to be, Preston Hollow is covering that?
I'm sorry, I say that again.
Preston Hollow is, I mean, they're going to be in charge of that debt?
They're the ones who have purchased that debt, so they would be the ones who would bear the risk of the project not performing, yes.
This is Ramiro Alvarado. I don't know if I can address some of the questions that have been raised, but just for clarity, you know, what we were talking about in the county was 5.25% for the 2023B1 bonds. the county was, uh, five hundred, you know, 5.25% for the 2023 B1 bonds, you know, and comparable credits in the marketplace are trading in the mid-sixes to mid-seven percent yield, so dramatically below, uh, market yields. And then even though it's not to exceed 7.75%, you know, the proposal, you know, that we have discussed, you know, with the county and the CDA and with, uh, Davenport is 7%, you know, for the B2 and B3 bonds, which again comparables in the marketplace are, uh, you know, 8% plus, so both of which are, you know, substantially below market. Um, that's kind of, you know, one, one answer to one question. The other thing that, uh, that I heard, and, and I understand the, the board needs, you know, details here, but I can assure you that, uh, all of, uh, the requirements under the PUD, you know, are current. You know, we have completed the clubhouse, uh, you know, in Land Bay Five. Uh, Land Bay Four is substantially complete. You know, when I was there last, uh, last month, uh, you know, the pool was, uh, you know, getting the final tiling, should be open to the community. Um, all of the prior issues of the prior developer, um, you know, have, uh, all of the faults have been satisfied, you know, in terms of, you know, some, you know, past mistakes that they had made. And, uh, but I, I will highlight one thing here is that, uh, we are not the lender. You know, we are the lender. Uh, you know, we are, uh, very excited about, you know, uh, you know, our working relationship with the county here. And, uh, and yes, uh, you know, one of the, you know, board members there said that in our prior presentation, we had focused on the commercial development, and that, that is what I said, you know, during that, uh, you know, during that presentation. However, the $45 million represents the estimated, uh, balance of all of the public infrastructure necessary for both the residential and the commercial. Um, uh, you know, that is a not-to-exceed number. I believe that, you know, the actual debt number that would be required is going to be, you know, less than that. Um, and the reason we are, uh, accelerating the development on the commercial is in no way extraordinarily benefiting Preston Hollow. Uh, again, we're strictly, strictly a lender here. You know, if we make an investment, uh, you know, we get the right to, um, subject to the revenues being there, it's our risk, uh, that we get repaid principal in our coupon. But I believe the greatest beneficiary here of, you know, the development that would be accelerated is the county. Um, you know, the county has, uh, been, uh, as, as we've heard, you know, many times, has been looking for, uh, a grocery store, anchored retail center. Uh, you know, we do have an OLI with that that's going to, you know, cause a, uh, significant investment to be made here. And we're not the equity owner, we're just a lender. Um, the trustee of the original O6 bonds is, you know, the owner, you know, through New Kent Farms Holding Company, the owner of the property. So, uh, we're here willing, ready, and able, you know, to make an investment to accelerate, uh, development that I think will be extremely accretive to the county, um, and proposing to do it at, you know, substantially below market rates. And, you know, the, the alternative is to just, um, you know, just let the property, uh, pay for, you know, the development, which will likely mean that the commercial activity still in compliance with the pod, uh, is just going to be substantially delayed here. Uh, so, uh, but again, I wanted to clarify a few things that, uh, you know, there has been a substantial investment. You know, those broken promises from the original developer, you know, have been satisfied. We are current in the PUD requirements, and I believe you have some very happy constituents that, uh, all of those broken promises are being fixed, um, at this point in time. But, uh, you know, the, the request here, again, just if I were to boil it down into one simple, uh, you know, reason is that, uh, you know, we think it's in the county's best interest to accelerate that commercial development, uh, take advantage of, you know, the county's big win, you know, with Buc-E's and all of the other sales tax generators that would follow, you know, uh, you know, in, uh, in Land Bay Five, the feathers in Nice Re with, uh, the expansion of I-64 and the new interchange, uh, to finally have a, you know, a, uh, grocer, you know, in the community that, uh, you know, we've been hearing about for years. And there are some other exciting plans that, uh, we're not ready to go public with on Land Bay Four. But, uh, again, we're just a lender here. There's no, uh, there's no miracle, you know, windfall that's coming to us. Uh, you know, we just, uh, you know, feel very positive about, you know, the future for New Kent County and want to be helpful. Uh, and, and that's, you know, the, you know, the bottom line as to why we're making this request. So I, I just wanted to, you know, kind of layer that in. I know there was, Ben was struggling a little bit with, you know, the coupons, et cetera, but I just, uh, thought I wanted to step in and make that statement.
All right, well, thank you. Mr. Appleton, did you send you out a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer ordinance O-1623, approval issuance of revenue bonds by the Farms of New Kent.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn, Ms. Watkins. Excuse me, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Our next public hearing is Resolution R-2623, FY 2022-2023 Budget Amendment, Colonial Downs Revenue Appropriation. Mr. Hathaway?
Goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, the resolution you have before you, Resolution R-2623, is a resolution to amend the FY 2022-23 annual budget for the county by appropriating $11,803,624.17. So we're amending our previous budget to appropriate funding revenues received from Colonial Downs. As you recall, um, last year, we did not budget any Colonial Downs revenue. All of that revenue flows to our capital reserve budget. So, uh, we've just completed our audit. We finalized that revenue number for Colonial Downs. So now we're asking that you appropriate that to the previous budget in which it was the year that it was received.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway before we have the public hearing?
If I may add too, I apologize. The reason we're having a public hearing is because of state, the state code requires any budget amendment above 1% of your total adopted budget, uh, we're required to have a public hearing to amend the budget.
Anybody have any questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing for Resolution R-2623, FY 2022-2023 Budget Amendment, Colonial Downs Revenue. And no one signed up, so we will close the public hearing. And I'll ask again, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion or questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R-2623, amending the FY 2022-2023 budget and appropriate, and appropriating revenue received from Colonial Downs to the capital fund.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Chairman, if in the motion, we could just have the number, the amount?
And the amount of $11,803,624.17.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Our next public hearing is the FY 23-24 Budget Amendment, Carry Forward Appropriations Resolution R-2723. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, uh, the resolution that you have before you, R-2723, is a resolution to amend this current year's budget by carrying forward, uh, funds from previous rev, from previous fiscal years to this current year, um, in the amount of $58,398,343.37. The majority of this money, um, comes from capital projects that are ongoing, grant projects that are ongoing. It's, it's mainly capital and grants. And there is a breakdown, um, of the exact projects and line items that are being carried over in your packet.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway before we have the public hearing? All right. Do we have any sign up? All right, well, we will...
Did I open the public hearing? I forgot, I'll read it.
I'll open and close it at the same time. Public hearing FY 23-24 Budget Amendment, Carry Forward Appropriations, Resolution R-2723. And since no one signed up, I will close that public hearing. Anybody else have any comments for tonight? Um, and I understand there's some people here tonight are former graduates from New Kent University. Are they still here? Back in the corner. Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here tonight, supporting your fellow graduates. If no other comments, do I?
I didn't have a choice.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I move to adopt Resolution R-2723, amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by approving the supplementary carry forward appropriation in an amount of $58,398,343.37.
Thank you, Ms. Page, Ms. Watkins.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. And I will entertain a motion.
Um, Mr. Chairman, before we close, I have something I forgot.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to say that on Monday, um, for the first time ever, we had a, a groundbreaking for, um, I-64 widening. Um, I was told that even when they started years ago with, um, building the interstate, they didn't have a, um, a groundbreaking. So we had the, um, privilege of having the governor here, Secretary of Transportation, along with some of staff, um, to go over to the visitor's center to do, uh, to do the groundbreaking. Um, the good news is in a week and a half, they will start working on I-64. Um, yes, there is going to be traffic backed up, but guess what? Traffic is backed up now. And so, um, but they did appropriate $756 million toward the widening of I-64, so it's a reality that's going to happen.
And I want to personally thank you for all of your hard work on that project. I don't know that we could have done it without you. So, now, did you want to make a motion too?
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of business that I would very appreciate.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Jordan, I noticed you already turned the two persons. One thing...